Is seven o'clock. Y'all know I love gavel. All right, so it's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll start off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move into the roll call. Eric, I'll turn it over to you to roll call, or Tara, do you mind a roll call for us?
Thank you.
Okay, Bars.
Here.
Buckley.
Here.
Luce.
Here.
Presna.
Here.
Coyne.
Here.
And Brown is excused. We're all here. Wonderful. Next on the agenda, approval of the agenda, my favorite part. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Motion by Dave Coyne, second by Rick Bars. All in favor?
Aye.
Any not in favor? So moved. Next up, the correspondence and board reports. I don't really think there's much we need to do there. It should be in your packet. It's really just an FYI, so unless anybody has any questions, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the May 3rd, 2023 regular ZBA meeting. Does anybody want to put forth a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Approved.
All right, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Dave Coyne. The motion was Eric Luce. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Minutes are approved. All right, so we'll move into public comment. This is restricted to three minutes, and it is regarding issues not on the agenda tonight. So we'll open up public comment at 7:02. And it looks like we can close public comment. Do we have anyone on Zoom? I didn't check that. No one on Zoom. Okay, perfect. We can close public comment at 7:02. And move into new business. First on the agenda, we are in need of a vice chair. Looking at you folks, Dave, Rick, Ryan. So does anybody have a nomination for vice chair of our awesome team here?
I'll nominate Rick.
Do we have a second?
I'll support.
All right. Rick, you up for the gig?
Sure, sure.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I guess I should specify of Rick being, Rick Bars being the vice chair. Any opposed? So moved. Welcome aboard, vice chair. That gets us to the next item on the agenda, PZA 23-01 Administrative Appeal. This is a request from William Irvin to appeal the denial of the PLD 23-0023 Land Division application by the zoning administrator, Peter Gallinat, to split approximately 10.1 acres from the northeast corner of their 45.73 acre parcel, The new parcel is intended for the construction of a one-family residential home that would access the end of Sandstone Drive. The parcel is located in the southwest quarter of Section 16 and zoned R2A, one and two-family, low-density residential, B4, general business, and OS office service zoning districts. The land division, as proposed, did not satisfy the standards of Section 7.17.b, streets, roads, and other means of access, public access required, minimum road frontage, that the front lot line of all lots shall abut onto a publicly dedicated road right-of-way, and that the required frontage on an approved road right-of-way shall be equal to or greater than 100 feet in length, which is the minimum lot width for the R2A zoning district in which the proposed lot would be located. Before we get into the items, there is a potential conflict of interest for me. I live directly across from this parcel in question here. I feel pretty confident I can go ahead with the meeting as is, but is our standard procedure to vet that with the board here to ensure there is no conflict of interest. So I need to put that to a vote, right?
Right. What happens in this case is the rest of the Board of Appeals members, the other four, would deliberate on whether you or not you have an actual conflict, and ultimately that should result in a motion to either determine that you do have an actual conflict, or that you don't have a conflict. And that motion should then be voted on by those four. At this point, you can continue to preside over that.
Yep.
But the deliberation should, and the vote should be taken by the other four members.
Okay. Well, there you go. Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
I guess I'm curious as to what our bylaws say. Is it a shall recuse, or is it a may recuse?
What the bylaws indicate, just pull the bylaws up, talking about a conflict of interest. Do we have those in our packet? You did not, no, no. It simply notes that the ZBA member shall declare a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when, and then there's basically four items, and one of them is that the ZBA member owns or has financial interest in a neighboring property being within 300 feet of the subject property. So that's really where this item comes up. The question here really is that, in relation to the subject property, the action that's before you is not a variance. So it's not, it's not property-based in the true sense, where it's a variance related to a particular parcel. This is an appeal of an administrative action. So what you're looking at is what Peter Gallinay did, and what the ordinance says, and making a determination as to whether or not Peter Gallinay acted in any of these four ways are noted in the, in the agenda here. The constituted use of discretion and the other three. So this, the determination here in this first item is really related to Peter's actions, zoning administrator, and what the ordinance actually says in Section 7.17b. So it's not, it's not subject or parcel-based in that sense, although it obviously relates to a particular parcel.
Clear as mud.
Yeah, right. So what I will say here is that it is up to the four of you to determine if she has an actual conflict. And if you do, by majority vote, it would take three of you to vote that she does have a conflict, then at that point, she would be asked to step down. If you find that she does not have a conflict, an actual conflict, what she's basically describing as a potential conflict or perceived conflict. If you, if three of you don't vote that she has a conflict, then she would continue to preside over the meeting.
She can preside over the meeting, but she can't vote?
No, once, once a conflict is determined, if a motion, three people vote and determine that she does have an actual conflict because of the location of her, her home in relation to this, this land division parcel, then at that point, per the, per the bylaw, she, she should step down and not, not participate in this agenda item at all.
It seems like Liz has a, not a direct conflict, but more like an indirect conflict, which to me doesn't seem necessary to abstain from voting. I mean, several always have one conflict or another. To me, I just don't see that as a major issue. Living in, living in that same, I don't know if you're in the same subdivision?
Sorry, y'all, I only brought it up just to, to err on the side of transparency.
So ultimately, somebody needs to make a motion, one way or the other. It's basically a determination that Liz does have a conflict, or determination that she does not have an actual conflict. I'll make a motion, Board sees no conflict in her participation.
I didn't hear that. She has a conflict?
Sees no conflict in her participation.
Yeah, I support that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll continue rolling through. First up, any updates from the staff and the applicant? Do you want to start, Peter, Rodney?
I can, I can start, just to say a few words. So this, this is unusual, as I mentioned just a moment ago. This is not a variance request, which is typically what we have come before us. This is an appeal of administrative action. And take a look, there's a separate set of criteria that apply to that. And the agenda is laid out to kind of, to follow the process for this. The first part of review of an administrative action by the, by the Board of Appeals looks at these, this item, item D, which we'll come to obviously after the public hearing process. And that is deliberate on these four questions essentially here. Constitu, that his action, did it constitute abuse of discretion? Was it arbitrary or capricious? Was it based on an erroneous finding of a material fact? Or was it based upon an erroneous interpretation of the zoning ordinance? And in each case, it's basically yes or no question. If you, if you find that any of these, the answer to any of these is yes, then at that point, we step on to the, to the next step. But before we do that, if you find that the answer to each of these questions is no, then, then your response at that point would be to uphold his decision. You found his decision to be proper, and, and your action then would be to uphold his decision. If you find that any of these items are answered yes, based on the information you have, testimony given, then, as noted in item E there, you collectively become the zoning administrator. And what happens at that point is that you actually step back to the decision that, that Peter was making when he was reviewing the land division application. And it is your job as zoning administrator to follow the ordinance and, and to make a determination as zoning administrator as to the appropriate action on the land division application. That is, again, not a variance case, but you would be interpreting Section 7.17b, for example. You'd be reviewing that and making a decision, because that really is the key issue at hand here. But, but as I said, you'd be following the ordinance, you'd be the zoning administrator, and as the zoning administrator, you are required to follow the ordinance exactly. You cannot vary from it. That's, that's provisioned to the ordinance for his, his responsibilities. So that, that's sort of the two-part process to this administrative appeal. You have a memo from, from the township attorney who's with us, Mr. Puskar, that's available to answer any questions that you may have at any time. In the, in the memo that's in the packet, you have definitions of each of these terms, use of discretion, arbitrary, capricious. And saying, again, if you, please feel free to answer, ask the attorney any question that you may have about that memo. You do also have a confidential memo that was provided, and certainly that, you have that information in the other direction related to that as well. From my perspective, I'm confident that Peter made the correct decision, that the ordinance is clear. And so I would certainly, it's my recommendation to uphold it, his decision. Again, this is, this is ultimately your decision to make as part of this appeal process. So as we go along, I'm happy to answer any questions. Peter is also here as well to answer any questions that may come up.
All right, would the applicant like to speak at all?
Good evening, my name is Mark McKellar. I'm returning to the applicant. I just, housekeeping upfront, would you like a presentation in the public hearing so it's part of the record? Or would you like it before the public hearing? I'm real clear on the, the procedural timeline. Because Miss Bailey's doing it a little differently each.
Yeah, now would be fine. It's all going to be on the public record.
Fair enough. All right. So I think that, I just want to step back and kind of walk through the process from our perspective. The assessor and the zoning administrator are actually the entity parties that make the decisions, not just the zoning administrator. And certainly, the zoning administrator in this case relied in, you know, interpretation discussions with Mr. Nanny. And it just, for the sake of the record, I think it is unusual to have a planner suggest what you should vote for and whether or not the decision was proper or not. You're supposed to take the, you know, recommendations of legal counsel, the, you know, input by the public, the public hearing, and then compare those. So I think it's somewhat unusual to say that Rodney should be discussing something which he actually provided comment on initially in the decision-making. That aside, and that's for the record only, the main issue, and to narrow down the four topics, which, you know, you're more than able, Mr. Puskar had been involved in transactional report, we're an able attorney here, provided in terms of the questions you have to answer. It's really the last one. So it's, was, was it based on an erroneous interpretation of zoning ordinance? You know, abuse of discretion, arbitrary, capricious. I don't, we're not really alleging that. I don't necessarily think that that's, you know, the case. It's really was the, was the finding an improper interpretation, because at the end of the day, it's the language within the four corners of the document that has to drive the decision, and not the necessary political interest or interpretations of the township historically or anything like that. It's the actual words in the zoning ordinance. And that's really, I think, what we're discussing here is, the township has interpreted this way for a long time. We believe that the zoning ordinance is actually a little more clear than the interpretation. The zoning ordinance doesn't give, in our opinion, the same wide discretion to deny a permit in this case. And so why is that? And I'll narrow it down. The land use process in a land division is driven by the Land Division Act, and the township is permitted to adopt an ordinance with very limited powers. It should be noted that there is no case law to support the concept that the land division ordinance, which is a police power ordinance, it's adopted pursuant to the Land Division Act, permits a municipality to extrapolate additional rules by referencing to a zoning ordinance. It's done a lot, but the scope of which, you're permitted to do that under the Land Division Act is quite narrow. But the specific language that we're talking about here is, in an application, the denial, and it's Section 7 of the Land Division Act, and it's 7D. Says, "The ratio of depth and width of any parcel created by a land division does not exceed a four-to-one ratio of access roads, easements, or non-development sites." This is, in that sense, "The permissible depth of a parcel created by a land division shall be measured within the boundaries of each parcel from the abutting road right-of-way to the most remote boundary line point of the parcel from the point commencing of measuring." Then it speaks to width, and that's the ultimate thing we're talking about here. "The width similarly of a parcel shall be measured by the abutting road right-of-way line, or as otherwise provided by the applicable ordinance." Okay, so it says the right-of-way line. This ordinance doesn't provide any definition related to road right-of-way or roads. And so what this, this concept, you know, that's in, in play here is, I'm going to crush this Latin, but essentially, it's in the impera materia. So when you're structuring an ordinance or statutes, the concept that if there isn't a way to determine what this means by definition within its own language, look to the closest thing. And in this case, the zoning ordinance would be the closest thing. So you don't have to go necessarily to like Webster's. So what is right-of-way? So, you know, what's clear to me is that the width of the parcel must be measured by the abutting road right-of-way, and it has to have a measured boundary line that's from the abutting road right-of-way. That's all the Land Division Act provides to the land division ordinance. And so then we get into the definition of the lot lines and such. So a front lot line, front lot line separating said lot from the public or private road right-of-way. So the front lot line is defined as what is the line as measured at or from the road right-of-way. And so in determining what is the parcel width, lot width is defined as the straight distance between side lot lines. Remember, the lot width is what, the lot width is based on the land division ordinance, the lot width is based on, must be based on the road right-of-way frontage. How you define lot width in the zoning ordinance simply states a straight line distance between side lot lines, which refers back to the front lot line. It's the front lot line as where it intersects between the two portions of the side lot line. And that's all based on the front, frontage on a road right-of-way. Okay? If you continue to the definition in the zoning ordinance, road right-of-way. Important words in here. "The strip of land over which an easement exists to allow facilities such as streets, roads, highways, and power lines to be built." Not every right-of-way, which is typically 66 feet, has a road or a street or power lines or utility lines in it. It's built when it's necessary to be built out. A right-of-way is something separate from a road. A road is always in a right-of-way or easement. But a right-of-way is much larger, and it's a legally defined separate term. You have a right-of-way, and there may be a road or a street of varying width and material and build-out within it. It might not be built out completely. You might have a condominium development that's in phases. The right-of-ways have been secured, maybe even dedicated, like it was in this case, to the road commission. But they're not built out for eight, nine, 10 years as the project's being developed. Okay? In this case, we have to have a public road right-of-way access, and that's where Section 717 comes in. And 717 states that, and this is 717B, this is the whole thing. "Front lot line," which I told you what the definition was, which is determined from the road right-of-way, "of all lots shall abut a publicly dedicated road right-of-way." No, dedicate roads, you dedicate right-of-ways. And so we have to have a road right-of-way. Was it publicly dedicated? I think that there's no dispute that the road commission accepted the dedication in the plan. Says, "Further, required frontage on an approved road right-of-way shall be equal to or greater than the minimum lot width for the district in which the lot is located." Again, I don't think that we dispute that the width of the road right-of-way, being 413 feet, is not compliant with the zoning ordinance. What seems to be hanging up, people, is the last sentence here. Says, "Frontage on a T-turnaround shall not be counted toward the minimum road frontage requirements." A T-turnaround is a road. It's not a right-of-way. The T-turnaround that's required under this ordinance and by its own definition is the road T-turnaround and the infrastructure necessary to comply with the county road commission. County road commission does not require a 413-foot right-of-way to be dedicated. What the road commission requires is a very small, roughly 100-foot T-turnaround easement area or right-of-way to build the T-turnaround on. This right-of-way is substantially larger and contemplates larger development than just a T-turnaround. And was approved and adopted by the road commission. This is not the physical road. Only 100 feet of it is, or roughly. So even if we had, if you took the 300 additional feet, we have 413 feet of right-of-way. We have about 100 feet of T-turnaround. Even if you took the T-turnaround out, it's left 300 feet of right-of-way under this ordinance that would be utilized to determine whether or not this road complies. 300 feet is more than enough to comply in every fashion. It addresses the four-to-one ratio, um, it addresses the, um, oh, minimum width ratio, uh, or when with that number. It's, it's somewhat challenging for me to understand how we go from a road right-of-way, which is clearly the, a defined term as the main crux of the determining factor to determine if and in fact we have enough frontage, to the interpretation which the township has, at least alleged historically taken, which is, it's gotta be a built-out approved road, and that a T-turnaround, any T-turnaround, even if it's within a right-of-way of a mile long, you can't utilize that right-of-way to determine how much frontage is appropriate. A road could be built there. A road doesn't need to be built there because you would just connect a driveway at the end. If the road was built through, you would have a driveway off of that road, and that road would be within the right-of-way. And so, it, it's, it doesn't matter, I guess the argument for the township would have to be, a T-turnaround on a half a mile right-of-way disregards half a mile right-of-way completely for frontage. It's unnecessary because of the T-turnaround that's built on. And, and it just doesn't, it doesn't compute. It doesn't make a lot of sense. There would have been no purpose to extend the right-of-way beyond the road commission standards, to allow that property to be encompassed, the plat, and the adjacent properties served by it, to be served in any other way than to service it for driveways, or further connection of the right-of-way to the, it would be the west in this case of Broadway, or to the east into the city. So, I, I, I tend to think it's actually quite clear. We have the sufficient amount of right-of-way, and the right-of-way is the standard. It's not the built-out road. Roads are defined separately. Um, the right-of-way clearly defines itself as where roads could be built, where streets could be built. And in this case, the plain and clear language of the ordinance says, both ordinances, is the right-of-way itself is the functioning factor to determine if there's enough frontage. In this case, that, if that is true, then it's undisputed that it qualifies. So, that's really the, the issue we have here. And when we boil it down, it's, does the T-turnaround exception mean that the entire right-of-way is eviscerated in the, in the equation? And it just simply can't be, in our opinion. So, with that, I think there's, there's plenty of other things I'd like to address, but I don't wanna waste your time on the things that really don't, um, get to the, the heart of the matter. I think this is the heart of the matter. So, with that, I, I'd like to invite any questions you have, clarifications you'd like us to present, um, or prepare for, and I would reserve the opportunity at the end of the public hearing to address any comments made by the, um, by the board or by the public so that if there's any clarifications we could make, I'd like that opportunity.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Ms. McKell, McKeller, right?
McKeller, yes, correct.
Uh, there's a re, there was a response letter to Mr. Nanny's, Mr. Nanny sent a letter to Mr. Irvin, and there was a response. Was this your response? It was in blue, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Alright, we'll call you back up if there's any questions during the questions phase.
Okay.
I think that's how we normally do it, right? Um, alright, we'll move into the public hearing portion. Um, I believe, is there a timing requirement on these?
Typically, three minutes is, is what's, uh, is the limit that's usually set for these.
Perfect. If you could limit your public comment to three minutes, um, it's always helpful, too, if you state your name and address, um, when you come up. Oh, opening public comment at seven twenty-eight. Thanks, Tara. Alright, we will close public comment at seven twenty-eight. Um, we'll move into questions.
Oh, wait.
Oh, wait.
I'm sorry, I, I have a public comment.
Oh, go right ahead. Come on down.
I just wanted to, to say that, um, I'm a neighbor of the subject property. I live approximately three doors down from where, um, I understand, uh, there's, there's a proposal to build. And I just wanted to say, I've lived there for only three years, have enjoyed living there tremendously, and I read the packet, I read the argument. Um, I tend to side with, with Mr. Irvin and his interpretation of it, and I would really look forward to having, um, the Irvins as neighbors. It's a lovely, uh, place to live, and I understand that their dream for it is, um, is a lovely dream as well. So, I just wanted to mention that.
Well, thank you.
Is it proper to have in person's name and address? Is that what we do?
Yep. I was just gonna ask, do you mind to state your name and address?
My name is Patricia Moore, and I live at two-three-nine-six Sandstone. My husband's name is Tim Moore.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would anybody else like to speak? Alright, we will close public comment at seven-thirty and move into questions from, oh, did somebody say something? Nope, I'm hearing things. Um, questions from board members. Does anybody have any questions?
Before we get too deep into it, I would like to hear if our attorney has any thoughts or rebuttal to, uh, the presentation we just heard, uh, while it's still fresh on the mind.
Sure, thank you. Happy to do that. And for those of you who haven't met, Dave Puskar from Bronkendrick, uh, and Township Attorney. Um, you know, some of what I might have to say would be more proper for closed session, which you could, um, if you'd like, because you have correspondence for me, make a motion to go into closed session on. We can talk about what that might look like. But in general terms, um, you know, I, I appreciate what Mr. McKeller has laid out. He and I have had different, uh, matters together before, and he's, he's a very good attorney. Um, I tend to, uh, generally disagree with what has been put forth, uh, particularly because when it boils right down to it and you look at, um, seven point one-seven, there is that specific, um, exception for T-turnaround. That's clear as day. That can't be used. Uh, and then, the phrasing that is used is not just right-of-way. The words "public" and "road" are used in that as well, and those are defined terms, too. And a road is something, if you look at our definitions there, that are, are important to have travel and access to the land. And so what we're talking about here is a situation where, uh, we have to have, and if you look at our ordinance as a whole, too, um, how do you get to this spot? How do emergency vehicles get to this spot? How do we know, um, because the section of the right-of-way is not constructed, there's nothing there, it's a field. And, um, you know, how do we have proper access and, and things for emergency vehicles? So, um, generally speaking, when, and I appreciate kind of, and I think it's important, too, for all of you to keep in mind when you're going through this, um, the agenda has those four items, right, to make a determination. Counsel has talked about those first three, uh, as not being an issue. I think you should still make sure that you discuss those and, and make motions on those. Um, but when it boils right down to it on that third one, um, I think looking at this as a whole and looking at that specific exception, because a general principle of, uh, ordinance interpretation is that you have to read everything. You can't simply state parts of it that you don't like don't apply. And so, that exception is there. Can't be ignored, it's written in there. Um, I would also say, and point out for you briefly, uh, there was some discussion about the, the Land Division Act and things like that, and there's an argument being put forth that potentially, um, somehow our ordinance is maybe more broad or, or not applicable when it should be applicable. There are actually two cases, um, that are somewhat, uh, relevant here, that talk about those sections of the Land Division Act. They're unpublished, and unpublished means they're, um, not necessarily binding, but provide guidance, where a court of appeals has looked at that and provided guidance on those types of things. And there's other provisions in that act that talk about, um, in addition to those parts of the Land Division Act, that there can be, uh, other ordinances or, um, regulations that, uh, could be put in place by a municipality that, that would have to be complied with. And so, that's what we have here with section seventeen point seven. And I think counsel was correct, at the end of the day, to really boil this all down to, to that section.
Through these items here.
I would just add that, um, as you're going through the four items, you know, make sure you're paying attention to what those standards are. You know, I provided you with a memo that is in your packet, publicly available, that talks about what those standards are and what it means to have an abuse of discretion or have a decision be arbitrary and that kind of thing. Now, again, Mr. McKeller has indicated that they're not challenging those, um, those first two, and maybe the, maybe the first one, and that it's really the interpretation issue. But make sure you consult with that, and make sure you make a clear record as to what it is you're finding and, and why.
I guess my interpretation of the road right-of-way, I'm confused with this, with you saying that, uh, it's field, so it's not really a road that public can go down. But there's seasonal roads that wintertime, people can't go down, unless you have the right vehicle. You can, if you have the right equipment. So how is that, this different than something like that?
So one thing to keep in mind is that, 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 uh, you are reviewing the matter based on this zoning ordinance in this community. We do not have any seasonal roads in the Charter Township Union. We don't, so, I understand that, I respect that. I've been on a seasonal road, out of season, it was not fun, uh, but it is not material to this particular case. The, as, as attorneys noted, that, that, uh, we have definitions in the ordinance, and that's the other thing I would encourage you to keep in mind. You are, in, in your review, you are, you're reviewing Peter Gallinay's decision. He is required, as zoning administrator, to follow the ordinance exactly. And so that includes the definite, defined terms for, for public road, for road, for right-of-way, all those, those defined terms. Um, and, and so, I understand you, you, you may have a, have a, a separate, uh, understanding of, of certain terms, as you said, you know, looking at something like a seasonal road. But, but from, for the purpose of your review tonight, you are reviewing the exactness of what the zoning administrator did, and you, and his actions were based on, on our ordinance. Uh, the, the one other comment I'll make, uh, you have a, a copy of our April, the April twentieth memo that, that I, I prepared as department head for the Community and Economic Development Department, uh, and, and that's exhibit B, and then you have the exhibit C, which is, uh, where the added comments are put in. That, that memo, uh, was, was in, in response to, um, as it notes at the beginning, in response to, to Peter Gallinay's action to deny the, the land division application, and it notes why. But the real purpose of this memo was to invite them to sit down with us again and have a conversation about how we could be successful with this, and, and, and come to a conclusion that, that would meet the ordinance requirements and also, uh, get at what they were trying to accomplish with this, this family farm parcel. So it, the, the memo is not a, a strict, this is the action I took, which would normally come from Peter Gallinay. In that case, that action was simply recorded in our BSNA software, because that's, that's how we, uh, review these applications. But, uh, anyway, so that, I just wanna make sure you understand that, that this memo, there's a lot of comments in there about things that are completely irrelevant to the conversation tonight about section seven point one-seven. You know, we talked about master plan, we talked about other things to help them understand some background related to the foundation under the zoning requirement. Uh, so that, uh, those are the pieces to keep in mind, is, is you want to focus specifically on, on what Peter reviewed and, and what he used to make his decision. Uh, and beware of, of stepping too far away from that, because Peter is required to follow it with exactness.
Was there follow-up conversations after that memo? I take it, no?
We did. We, we did have a follow-up meeting, uh, and we had a conversation about a number of different options. They ultimately decided to pursue, pursue this one.
Gotcha. Yes, would you like to respond to that? Come on up. Yep, I think you can.
Thank you. For your question. I, I wanna respond actually just to something, uh, Mr. Puskar mentioned earlier. I didn't dwell on this a whole lot, but I wanna direct your attention to the definition of road or street one more time. I think it's section two-twenty-seven of your ordinance. There's a lot of talk about public, road, right-of-way, and taking that in conjunction, meaning that somehow that's an approved road. But if you look at the definition of road or street, it says, "Any public or private thoroughfare or right-of-way." Two different concepts. Other than a public or private alley, dedicated to or designed for travel. It's not a public or private thoroughfare and right-of-way dedicated to and designed for travel. It's or. They keep those concepts separate. You know, a right-of-way is dedicated, that's a legal concept, dedication, easement or a right-of-way. And what can be used within that dedication is the, the road for travel. But, uh, so, even if you take those definitions in conjunction with each other and try to bootstrap them together, I still think that we end up in the same position that we said before, which is that a road or street also includes, um, a right-of-way separately that was dedicated for use. And then there's a separate definition, last one, which is public road or street. It says, "Any road or street or portion thereof which has been dedicated to and accepted by, for maintenance by the road commission." That's it. It's all it says, and we have that. You know, we have a public right-of-way that was dedicated. Um, and then for this, lastly, the safety issue. The T-turnaround in and of itself is a safety design mechanism. That's why cul-de-sacs and T-turnarounds are designed the way they are, for apparatuses. If that T-turnaround was to be extended another two hundred feet each way, become a road, and then you would just be permitted to have a driveway off it. So, it, I think that that's kind of a, a dog that doesn't hunt, in my mind, in terms of, uh, physical, uh, constraints of, uh, safety, public health, safety and welfare. So, um, thank you for the opportunity to clarify. Thank you.
As you said, one comment again, because Mr. Gallinay has to, has to follow this ordinance exactly. I appreciate the comment, but I would note that, under that definition of public road or street, on page two-dash-twenty-seven, it, it refuse to, refers to being, uh, dedicated and accepted for maintenance by the county road commission. We have in, uh, several, uh, uh, rights-of-way in, in the area of this, this development, the Cornerstone Estates, uh, which the Sandstone Drive is part of, uh, that are, uh, undeveloped rights-of-way, similar to, uh, Broadway Street. The Broadway Street is an undeveloped right-of-way. Uh, this, it's, it's platted absolutely, uh, that, that plat was accepted by the state of Michigan, which is actually the accepting agency for that. Uh, the, the roads that are developed within it, uh, were accepted by the road commission for maintenance, but they do not maintain undeveloped rights-of-way. We have two undeveloped rights-of-way right here on South Lincoln Road that dead-end into that subdivision. They were not used for that subdivision, uh, for reasons I, I, for my time. Those are not maintained. Uh, in fact, we have to make sure they get mowed, or the homeowners on either side have to make sure they get mowed. Uh, if you drive down the road, you'll see one of them is not mowed right now. Uh, in the same way, the road commission does not maintain the undeveloped Broadway Street right-of-way. They do not mow, they don't clean it off, they don't, uh, do anything within that space. They do maintain Sandstone Drive within the Cornerstone Estates subdivision, but they do not maintain that undeveloped Broadway Street right-of-way. So, just, it's, in terms of discussing, uh, how, how this falls in terms of the specifics of the definition.
And I would, if I may, Chair, add, it, it, you know, it gets really in, into parsing words, and what does dedicated mean, and what does designed mean, but there is a phrase in there, "Travel and access," which is important to keep in mind, because, again, and, you know, going back to Rodney's comment, too, about, uh, off-road type of fat behavior, which was your question, you know, there's, there's no indication here that there is vehicular travel and access across the undeveloped right-of-way. So, you know, you are, as you go through these things and you look at the interpretation piece of this, um, it's important to keep in mind that you do have to look at the ordinance, not, um, you know, what you may think separately from that, um, if that makes sense.
Chair. It will be maintained by the county when it's a road. But it's, it said or right-of-way, though. It's a road or right-of-way in that. It wasn't and, but it was or.
So the...
Like you said. So it would be, uh, it'd be maintained by the county when it's a road.
So a couple of points, there's no, um, just to think about, there's no, um, plan in this... process at all for it to become a road. They're not, they're not going to, they're not proposing to turn it into a road or anything like that. The question is, as it sits today, does it meet the definition of road or street, right-of-way?
Or right-of-way.
Well, the language is publicly, you've got to look at the whole phrase, and I can, let me make sure I say it correctly. So the phrase is publicly dedicated road right-of-way. Not road or right-of-way, publicly dedicated road right-of-way. And then you break down those terms.
But isn't it dedicated as a right-of-way? The county designated it as a right-of-way?
It's a right-of-way.
And for a future road?
It's, potentially.
Well, that's what it is.
So I'm not arguing with you there, but you need to look at then what those phrases mean, which is what we were just talking about before. And that's not, that's not my call. That's not my call. That's your call.
Go right ahead.
Okay. I had to make a slight, like a trial, but let me negate the argument completely. The T-turnaround is permitted and only is not counted to determine the road frontage. Our client can use the road T-turnaround as the improved area, which is maintained, as the area where they can take their driveway off of. It's a different concept than determining what the frontage necessary to qualify for land division is. We don't need to maintain anymore beyond the T. We're allowed to connect to the T. We just can't use it arguably to come up with the frontage. So we don't even have to discuss that issue, but there's nothing in the ordinance that says we can't use it or utilize it for the purposes in which it was dedicated. We just can't use it in calculating the right-of-way frontage for the land division. And so, again, I think it's just a dog that doesn't hunt. So I'll get that. I'll sit down. Thank you.
Go right ahead, Rodney.
I'm not sure what that has to do with, what the comments he made are referring to the County Road Commission and their rules for where they issue a driveway permit. And you have a copy of their permit in your packet where they did issue a driveway permit to allow them to connect into somewhere, it actually doesn't really make clear where, but presumably somewhere in that T-turnaround area. That has nothing to do with the conversation we've been having. I'm not sure how it negates any of the conversation we've been having, because that's the County Road Commission, that's their rules, and they do what they do with regards to their roads that they maintain. And the question before you is, did Peter make the correct decision in determining that the undeveloped Broadway, right-of-way is not a road that creates road frontage for them to be able to split off this lot? And that's really the key element here, and I just simply refer back to what the attorney said about the defined terms. And you do have to look at the defined terms. We can't parse them, we can't split out the part that we like, we have to go with the ordinance as written, because that's what the zoning administrator is required to do.
Chair, just for reference, real quick, the section is 17.7B. The phrase I was quoting, "publicly dedicated road right-of-way," is in that first sentence of B. And then the last part of B, 17.7B, says, quote, "Frontage on a T-turnaround shall not be counted toward the minimum road frontage requirement." So that's where the language is coming from. That's all I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I think, and again, this is a lot of paperwork, so this may be a dumb question, but I think the real issue at hand here is, is a right-of-way able to be counted as frontage in our existing ordinance? Yes?
An undeveloped right-of-way, yeah.
Yes. So that could count towards frontage?
No, that's the question.
The question is, does just a right-of-way that is not developed, does that meet the definitions necessary in the ordinance to have frontage? That's, go ahead, Rodney.
But really, that's the question you only come to after you've gone through these four items, because basically if you determine, you know, like I said, basically if you answer yes to any of these four criteria here, only then do you become the zoning administrator.
Right. I think it's just understanding that helps us answer those questions.
Right. The first part of this is not us determining what it means. The first part of this, we move into that if we determine a yes to any one of these first four. This, the first thing at hand and the first thing that we have to address, and it goes no further if we find no yeses to those questions, is was it interpreted correctly? I mean, we have A, B, C, and D. We're focusing on D right now. I'm sorry, I'm looking at, there's not bullet points, they're not A, B, C, and D. It's the fourth bullet point. But we're talking about, was it an erroneous interpretation based on the language? It's not a question of whether or not we agree with the language. It's a question of, was it an erroneous interpretation based on the language? There's a difference there, it's a key difference.
Well, why don't we go through these questions, unless anybody has any other questions before we dive into that? So we're just, yes or no, whether or not the zoning administrator's actions constituted an abuse of discretion?
Yeah, I think.
And do we need to put a motion in for each one of these?
I would suggest, just for the record, that you have a motion on each one.
Does anyone want to put in a motion either way on that?
How do you word it? I mean, do you say?
You could just say.
Typically, a motion to determine that the zoning administrator did or did not.
Okay. I make a motion that the zoning administrator did not abuse of discretion.
Abuse his discretion.
Abuse his discretion.
Does anybody want to second that?
Support.
Brian supports. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
I think that's a majority, right?
So the record is clear, we should know who voted for what. I don't think that was entirely clear than what everybody said.
Dave Coyne was a no. All others were in favor.
Do you want that as a roll call?
Let's do these as a roll call vote to be clear.
It was a yes. I mean, it was a yes. Everything else, all your other ones were no's. I was a yes.
Yes, that's right. Sorry about that. We'll get it done as a roll call.
So the motion was that he, that the zoning administrator did not abuse his discretion. So if that's, then if you agree with that, then your answer would be yes. So my thought is, I'd recommend all these be a roll call vote.
I was confused.
I probably misworded it.
No, Rick said "not," and we're not reading him that.
I know. It's a lot.
So I'm, I'm a no.
Do I have to do the roll call? I can do it. Do you mind, Tara?
Nope.
Thank you. All right. Buckley?
Just to clarify on that, what we're saying with this motion, if I say aye, what I'm saying with this motion is that I agree with the motion that there was no abuse of discretion.
That's my motion.
My response is aye.
I also agree that there was not an abuse of discretion.
Luz?
Aye.
Bars?
Aye.
Coyne?
The absolute.
Okay, so we have four ayes and one nay. And we can move on. Was the zoning administrator's action arbitrary or capricious? Those definitions are in the packet, if you would like to explore them. Otherwise, does anybody want to put forth a motion on that?
I think the documentation makes it pretty clear that it was neither arbitrary nor capricious, even though we may be having some conversation about interpretation. So based on the documentation we have at hand, I would make a motion that the board deems that the planning administrator's actions were not arbitrary, were not arbitrary or capricious.
Support.
We've got a support from Rick Bars. Tara, do you mind a roll call? Coyne?
No.
Bars?
Aye.
Luz?
Aye.
Buckley?
Aye.
Presna?
Aye.
Okay, we have four ayes and one nay. Motion passes. As the administrator's was not arbitrary or capricious. Correct.
You can change mine to aye.
So all ayes?
Yeah, all ayes.
Okay. We're all in. Okay. Next up, whether or not the zoning administrator's action was based upon an erroneous finding of a material fact. And again, material fact is defined for us in here.
You have that on hand, that you could read that into the record?
Sure. Erroneous finding of a material fact. The term clearly erroneous has acquired a well-accepted meaning in Michigan. I'm not going to go through the case law there. I'm just going to kind of read through that part. A finding of fact is clearly erroneous when the reviewing body, after weighing all the evidence, is left with a definite and firm conviction that a mistake has been committed. This is true even when there is some evidence to support the finding. Under a clearly erroneous standard, there is a review of the evidence and facts presented to a lower tribunal and review of the tribunal's decision made thereon, or in other words, review of the record for error. A material fact is distinguishable from an ordinary fact. A material fact is an ultimate fact. That is, a material fact is a fact that is essential to the claim at issue. For example, in a contract case, the material fact or ultimate fact as distinguished from the evidentiary fact is the meeting of the minds rather than merely that the parties conferred. Would anyone like to put forth a motion whether or not the zoning administrator's action was based on erroneous finding of a material fact or not?
Yes, I would make a motion. I would make sure you make a motion that this body finds that there was no erroneous finding of material fact.
Is there any support for that motion? If there's no support, we don't vote on it, right?
The motion dies.
Okay. So would somebody like to make a motion to the alternate?
Just give a little time for a second.
And to expound on that, what I would say is that clearly there's some desire to discuss
an erroneous interpretation. However, I would make a strong distinction between an erroneous finding of material fact. It's, we've already discussed, we've heard it said by both attorneys here, that this really comes down to an interpretation, which we will get to next, but I would like to see if the board here has any, can point to any erroneous finding of material fact. I'd like to hear it.
I'll support.
Dave Coyne supports. Roll call. Luz?
Aye.
Bars?
Aye.
Buckley?
Aye.
Presna?
Aye.
Coyne?
Aye.
All ayes. Motion passes. There was not erroneous findings of material fact. Thanks, Tara. Last but not least, was the zoning administrator's action based upon an erroneous interpretation of the zoning ordinance? Would anyone like to put a motion forward on that element?
I'd like to make a motion that was based upon an erroneous interpretation of the zoning ordinance.
Would anybody like to second that motion?
I'll support.
Okay.
Keep in mind too, there's opportunity for discussion.
And I would like to discuss prior to voting. I'd like to get to the heart of the matter. I have sat on a planning commission and the zoning board of appeals for a number of years now. This is one of the more difficult, maybe the most difficult thing for me to wrap my head around in terms of what is appropriate and what's not appropriate, what's the correct interpretation and what's not the correct interpretation. This is not an easy decision, but what I do want to, and I want to bring, I want to make sure that we're reviewing the entirety of the statement that's being made about the public right-of-way and those definitions in its entirety, as well as the individual definitions, because I think it's important, again, to stress, we have a lot of new members on the committee right now. We are, we're not, at this stage of the game, our purpose here is not to jump ahead and say, "Well, we think this was reasonable, so we're going to reinterpret what was said." Our task for this last one is to say, was this misinterpreted based on the reading of the ordinance? And there is a difference, because the planning, the planning administrator does have to follow the ordinance as it's written, and it's, again, it's not a case of, "Do you agree with the ordinance?" That's not what we're being asked to decide tonight. Do you agree with the ordinance? What we're being asked was, is, did the planning administrator adhere to the ordinance as it's written? If we determine that that's not the case, then we can talk about what do we think that ordinance is, or what do we think the appropriate interpretation of that is. But we're not having yet the conversation of, this is, this was an incorrect interpretation, so what do we do now?
I think that's a good point. Where, I mean, we have so much paperwork here, candidly, I've been trying to find it since you started talking, but where is the best place for us to do a solid review of what is exactly in question? Because I feel like we've heard so many discussions about road and T-turns and right-of-ways and the word "or" or "and," that I think it could be really helpful to just read through that exact component in its entirety, unless someone disagrees. Does anybody have that that it can point me to? It's in here somewhere.
Well, you have my April 20th memo that, Exhibit B, that starts with the, as introductory paragraph, and then as the paragraph that said roads and required frontage. And the first two paragraphs essentially set out what Mr. Gallinay did, summarized what he did with regards to land division application. So that may be a good starting point, and then.
Let's see.
I would refer you back to the Section 7.17B and the defined terms from there.
Is that page seven in our?
Page 30 in the packet.
Page 30 in the packet.
And as I said, the, start with the second paragraph, the first one, under roads and required lot frontage. Those first two paragraphs essentially are describing the action that was taken.
So under roads and required lot frontage?
Yep, the first two paragraphs there.
I'll just read through this for the benefit of the public record as well, but as you know, the adjacent subdivision development includes the platted Sandstone Drive, which ends in a T-intersection with a shorted, platted section of Broadway Street that is in direct line to the west of the end of the existing West Broadway Street in the city of Mount Pleasant, where it currently ends at Bradley Street. Sandstone Drive was fully constructed as a public road up to the point where it ends at the north edge of the Broadway Street platted right-of-way. A temporary T-turnaround was constructed within this undeveloped right-of-way to allow emergency vehicles and others to be able to maneuver back onto Sandstone Drive. So I guess with regard to that component, I'll keep going. As Mr. Gallinay previously shared with you, this T-turnaround in the undeveloped Broadway Street right-of-way is not in itself a road and cannot be used to meet the township's zoning ordinance requirements for minimum lot frontage on an approved and constructed public road or private road. The dedicated right-of-way for the platted but undeveloped Broadway Street is also part of this requirement, but alone is insufficient. So, and I think we're, it is really just, I think, the definition of road and that it is a right-of-way listed here, and if a right-of-way can be counted as frontage.
So here you have the description, summary of Mr. Gallinay's action. So here you have the description summary of, of Mr. Gallinay's action.
Correct.
And, and what he determined.
Yes.
And he's looking at, at not just road, but the public road, the defined term for public road. But, uh, you know, we've already talked about the, the definitions. Those definitions were used to make this action. So now you, there you have what Mr. Gallinay did. The question is, was that in some way, as noted here, based on an erroneous interpretation of the zoning ordinance? You, now looking at the specific words, both of the defined terms on page 2-27, uh, the zoning, uh, but also then section 7.17B.
And that is on page forty-something of our packet here.
Have you found it yet?
I think it's on, is it, read that number to me again, Rodney. Is it 560108? No, that's parcel or parent trap. Am I in the right spot? Is this in the packet?
Uh, the, the defined terms, I, I don't recall if they were in the packet or not, right offhand. It's in the zoning ordinance, which of course, pardon.
No, there's, 41.
No, I don't think that's what it is. Do you mind if I take a look at that?
Sure.
Okay. This is not in the packet, but I'm going to read through it. "Right-of-way, the strip of land over which an easement exists to allow facilities such as streets, roads, highways, and power lines to be built."
Why don't, why don't we do this? If you don't, don't mind, if I could suggest we take a break and have Tara copy that? Because that also has section 7.17 right after it. This is the two parts of the ordinance.
That sounds great. We'll take a five-minute break.
Minute, you, you, I think it's in your memo as well.
Is it in the memo?
Correct, so it's also-
If he can point you to it, that works too.
I mean, it's, it's not the, um, the actual, like, a copyright of the ordinance pages, but the memo goes, the public-facing memo here goes through the-
I think we could just get a copy of what's in that.
The definitions.
I think that looked pretty straightforward, and that way we know we're pulling it right from there.
I think it's in 16 in your packet.
Wait, it is in here?
I, I think so.
Did you what?
Page sixteen and seventeen in the packet.
This thing needed a table of contents. I mean, this looks different than yours, but it might have the same information.
So that, that's part of the memo, right?
Yeah. I feel like that could be helpful for everybody.
So if I could give you a second. Tara, would you-
Would you mind to just make a few copies of that?
This just contains that, that definition, the section page we've been talking about, and then section 7.17.
Can I take a copy of that?
The whole packet, yeah.
Thanks, Tara. Sorry, y'all. This just seems important, and I want to make sure everybody has the exact verbiage.
So as we're, um, as we're getting copies there, I think-
Hung up, is this, the fact that it's considered a right-of-way. Um, and right-of-way exists here, the strip of land over which an easement exists to allow facilities such as streets, roads, highways, and power lines to be built. And then road or street says, "Any public or private thoroughfare or right-of-way other than a public or private alley dedicated or designed for travel and access to any land, lot, or parcel, whether designated as a thoroughfare, road, avenue, highway, boulevard, drive, lane, place, court, or any similar designation. Various types of roads are defined as follows." Private road, and then you have those definitions. I think that's where some of this is getting caught up, where, I think you commented, Ryan, about the T-turn. Component not being able to, that, that piece doesn't count as frontage, right? But the fact that this piece of pavement, um, is considered both a right-of-way and a T-turn, is that?
The, the, the question, yes, is it, does it meet the requirements? If you note, now that you have the, the ordinance itself in front of you, section 7.17B, the header for B is, "Public access required." You heard from the attorney talking about that question of access, travel. So it's, "Public access required slash minimum frontage." So it's, this is addressing both topics, frontage on and, and public access. The, we've already talked about the pieces of it. The last, uh, paragraph of that, last sentence of that first paragraph is talking about a frontage on a T-turnaround, which is something that has to be developed. Uh, it doesn't count towards the minimum road frontage requirement. Uh, that, that, that item does not address public access, whether it counts towards public access. That question is really a road commission question, because they, they control the, the road driveway permits. But I would point out, on the next page, under item C, this is still part of section 7.17. Uh, now we're, we're getting into a detail, access on residential through lots. A through lot is, is a lot that has, has road frontage on, on both ends. Uh, you know, it, it has basically two front yards, one on each end, uh, as the ordinance defines it. On through lots in residential districts, the driveway provided, providing the primary means of vehicular access shall intersection- intersect the road on which the lot frontage is raised. So here, this is, this is making that statement, that this is all about a road. This is all about travelway, this is all about access. And an undeveloped right-of-way does not get there. No matter how many times Mr. McCullar may say so, that it simply does not get there. And so the section 7.17, which is the section in question, and the section that Mr. Gallinay reviewed and made his action based on, is, is all about providing both public access and the, the road, a direct frontage on a, a public road, a right-of-way in this case. Uh, so you have to understand that it's more than just the undeveloped right-of-way that gets you there. That this has to have the ability to access, the ability to actually travel on, and that is a developed roadway, uh, as our ordinance defines it. So, uh, that, that, that's the full pieces of the puzzle that apply here in terms of what Mr. Gallinay did. As I said, you may not agree with what the, with the, what the ordinance requires, but that's not the question today. The question is, did he make an error in, in his interpretation of these words?
Chair, if I may?
I, I'm going to make a point of order, that when we're in deliberation, we're really not doing a back-and-forth unless we ask for questions.
Well, then I'm going to make the objection on the record, please, because the comments being made are incredibly pretty close to bias. He supported the statements of Mr. Gallinay in his report of his decision, and now he's making statements at a return to this narrative. And the words he just said are an inflection of not the actual words in that definition. He just mentioned that access wasn't an issue for this council. So I, I think we're deviating again.
He did not mention that.
And I just want that on the record, thank you.
I would just share the objection, the noted. It's for the board to decide here what, what is, uh, item number four, what the answer to that is. And I think there's a motion that's been made, but not seconded, and we're in discussion. No, I think there is a motion that was made and seconded. And seconded, okay, so we're in discussion period. I think it's also clear that the repres- that the, the legal representative of the applicant does not agree with the township's interpretation, which is why we're here. I don't think we need to have a back-and-forth to establish that they don't agree.
Well, if we're going to continue to have-
No, we're not going to continue to have.
It seems that-
Point of order, Chair. This is, this is our deliberation. This is not a back-and-forth.
Sounds good. We'll keep it at deliberation.
What if we, what if we have a question for him?
We may ask questions, absolutely. It's just, we don't, the way our process works, the way our, our bylaws work, is that when we're in deliberation, we don't get interrupted by the, by, by anyone unless we ask questions. So if you have a question, by all means, ask. I'm just trying to make sure we maintain order in what we're trying to have in terms of our conversation.
Is this a private meeting or, or a meeting of the public?
Well, it is a meeting of the public, but we do have-
Well, then why can't the public speak up?
Well, we do, we have, we have public comment timed, allotted, and-
Yeah, that's nothing to do with the, with the ordinance, what we're talking about. We don't know what's going on until we hear what's going on here. Now you won't let anybody speak up.
Again, Chair, I would make a point of order that we did have-
You're elected by the public, that's the public speak up. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm bothering the guy, I live at 9:30, South Whitefield, Rose.
What am I supposed to do?
The gavel.
Oh, the gavel. Order in the room.
We did, I, I will point out that we did have a public hearing. We gave the public an opportunity to speak. The public expressed their sentiments. There has been no violation of the public meetings or anything that we're conversing here right now.
There's a, there's a-
Uh, or, please just reserve comment.
Well, you won't let anybody speak up, somebody's got to talk up, or you just sit there and put it over everybody? I went through this with the, with the water commission, I have a water bill. They're saying-
Point of order, Chair.
Breaking the, breaking the order.
Do what?
I'll leave if you want me to.
I think I'm going to invite myself to these. I, I don't, I don't want to.
If I may, if I may, if I may.
Yeah?
May, may I, may I say something about, about the procedure from this point forward?
Please.
The, uh, the, you have a lot before you. You do not have to make a decision tonight. That certainly is what, what the applicant would like. It, it certainly, there's value in, in making a decision when you're ready to make one. You have made some decisions already tonight. The question before you is, is, uh, this fourth one, which clearly you have a motion right now that, that you're in discussion on. I would suggest that you wait until after that motion is concluded before you turn the, the, the gavel over to a vice chair and, and depart.
Okay.
But, but you also have, have the option, if you choose to, to, to postpone action. Typically, that is done because you have questions that you need answers to. But it can also simply be cut, be done because you have reached a point where you need to, to, uh, to look at this again with fresh eyes at a, at a future meeting date.
I'm happy to just excuse myself, turn it over to the vice chair. This isn't exactly what I signed up for. So, I've got a kid at home. I don't want to do this, so.
So, I, I guess-
Take a five-minute break? Can we do that during deliberation?
You, you can take a break at any time you choose, but-
There's a motion on the table.
That's the problem, is there is a motion on the table?
Do you want to go ahead and vote on the motion? We can vote on the motion.
You can, or you can withdraw it, but with the-
You make a motion to withdraw the motion, right.
Would that need to be made by the initial?
Yeah, I have to.
Motioner? And agreed to by the second.
I don't know if you want to take your motion back. I don't think you have to.
No, I don't want to take it back.
Then do we want to just go ahead and vote on this motion in front of us, or?
I'm ready.
Okay. On the motion that the zoning administrator's actions were based upon an erroneous interpretation of the zoning ordinance, Tara, do you mind a roll call?
Yep.
That was the motion made by-
Coyne and seconded by Bars.
Okay.
Okay, Luz?
Aye.
That was a aye, sorry.
Yes, aye.
Okay. Um, Buckley?
No.
Presna?
I'm not comfortable voting.
I don't think you can accuse, I think you have to vote.
Aye.
Um, Bars?
Aye.
And Coyne?
Aye.
Okay, we have four ayes and one no, nay, so motion passes that it was based on erroneous interpretation of the zoning ordinance.
May I turn it over to the vice chair at this point?
Yep.
To leave, to announce that?
The chair is leaving. The meeting will be run by Rick.
That's wonderful. Okay. We did vote yes on the item, item four, or item with the unerroneous interpretation. I believe that next point is the zoning ordinance interpretation. And I'm not too sure whether we do that now or not, because we voted yes, is that?
That is correct. You, you, you move on to item E, uh, there, which basically, which you, as noted there, you are, you become the zoning administrator, and you are now reviewing the land division application, uh, and, and making whatever, uh, decision or determination that you believe should be made based on the requirements of the ordinance.
Okay, so just so we're, if I may, Chair?
Yes, please.
So, you've gotten now in kind of your decision matrix here. You've, you've gone, uh, no, 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 but you found yes on number four. So as a result, instead of moving at this exact point to item C, um, which would be that zoning interpretation request, which is a different item, you, you first moved to E. And so then, under E, you now step into the role of the zoning administrator under our-
And so then, under E, you now step into the role of the zoning administrator under our ordinance, and you have to reverse affirm, hole in part, modify, if you look at that italicized language there, what Mr. Gallinay did, that's your next item. And then depending on what you do, you may, you know, the, it's possible that the applicant may not want to move forward with item C, or not feel it necessary, but we can confer with the applicant on that when we get to that point.
We have to determine then, how we're going to, what we're changing, or...
So what you have is under item E there, now we're on page two of the packet, or page two of your agenda. The first thing you do is you review the zoning, the land division application. So that includes the plans that you received, that were prepared by Tim Beebe, that show the land in question, 10.1 acres from the larger parcel. And you were reviewing that application based on the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And so if you look on page two of your packet, item Roman numeral three there, that says "Border appeals determination of compliance with zoning ordinance standards," this is the part that you're taking an action on. And it lists there the applicable requirements of the ordinance. One is the lot width and the lot area. It has to meet those two standards, which are in section 3.8. And then the question is, getting right back to what we've been talking about, does it meet the requirements of section 7.17B? And in both of those cases, you're basically determining, does it or doesn't it? And I would suggest here, again, that you have these as separate motions. And if you answer yes to both, as zoning administrator, if three of you answer yes, which is what it would require, then at that point, then you are, it would take a final motion, which is number four there, to actually approve or deny or postpone action on the land division application.
Okay, so the first part is meets or exceeds section 3.8. R2A district standard for a minimum lot width of 100 feet and minimum lot area of 14. Can you clarify?
14,000, there's a missing zero there.
14,000 square feet, because the agenda shows 14,000, so I just want to clarify 14,000 square feet. So, I don't know if we discuss that first, or whether we take a motion at this point.
You can take a motion, add to the grade, discuss. The information that you need for that is in the plans that you received. The digital set was a reduced version of the...
Is that the new one she just, Tara, sent?
No, no, this is the plan set provided by Tim Beebe for the land division application.
All right. Oh, here we go. It sure is a micro view of that.
In that plan set, the sheet that's labeled three of three...
Yeah.
Has the proposed division, you can see that lot there.
Right.
It has the information of the lot area, 10.1 acres. And then it has dimensions, that you can see on the plans, they're kind of small, like read any of them if you need.
Okay. Do we have any discussion on this within the board?
Why don't we make a motion, and then we'll discuss it.
Okay, accept the motion.
I'll make the motion.
That, go ahead.
It meets and exceeds section 3.8, R2A district standards for a minimum lot width of 100 feet and a minimum lot area of 14,000 square feet.
Is there a support to the motion?
I support.
Okay, so, support by Luz? Okay, discussion, maybe discussion on this, on the motion? CNN will take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 I would suggest you stick with the roll call.
Roll call, Tara.
Just recorded.
Tara, yeah, I'm sorry.
All right. Coin?
Aye.
Bars?
Aye.
Luz?
Aye.
Buckley?
Nay.
All right, three ayes, it passes.
Second item, meets or exceeds sections 7.17B, streets, roads, and other means of access, public access required, minimum road frontage standards at the front line of all lots, but into publicly dedicated road right-of-way, and that the required frontage approved right-of-way shall be equal to or greater than 100 feet in length, which is the minimum lot width for the R2A zoning district. Do you have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Coin.
Is the motion that...
That it meets or...
That is the motion.
It meets or exceeds, yeah.
I'm sorry, meets or exceeds, yeah. Looking for support to the motion? Is there a support to the motion?
I support it.
Luz supports? Okay. Okay, but motion is support. Maybe discussion? Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
I'll give the roll call.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
Buckley?
Nay.
Luz?
Yea.
Bars?
Aye.
And Coin?
Aye.
Okay, can I just clarify, Luz, was yours a aye, or...
It was a aye, yes.
Aye, okay. All right, three ayes and one nay.
So...
Motion passes.
So at this point, you have, you are still the zoning administrator, and you would need to take action on the land division application from a zoning perspective. You are not approving the whole application, as the attorney mentioned earlier, as Mr. McCullar did, because it is approved, action is taken ultimately, both with the zoning administrator for zoning compliance, and the assessor related to the land division ordinance and other elements. So if you go back to the first page of the packet, and I apologize, I should have put it in the second number, too. The land division application here is this PLD 23-0023.
So where are we at?
So, you are now, you are now, you found that the land division application meets the zoning requirements. So now, the next step in the agenda, item four, is border appeals action on the land division application, which is an approval, a denial, or postponed action with request for additional information. So in terms of a motion you make, we need to reference the correct item. So I apologize, I should have put it in the agenda here, but on the first page, under this administrative appeal, going back to that paragraph, you'll see that it says, "Request from William Irvin to appeal the denial of PLD 23-0023." My suggestion is that your motion be to approve or to deny, and then start with PLD 23-0023, land division application from William Irvin to split approximately, and all that rest of that element there that should be part of that.
All right. I'd like to repeat that, if I could find out what that is.
Right here.
Let me see. Oh, okay, this is my page.
Yeah, this is the first page.
Okay. Okay. As far as the land division application from Mr. Irvin, and the request would be from William Irvin to appeal the denial of PLD 23-023, land division application by the zoning administrator, Peter Gallinay, to split approximately 10.10 acres from the northeast corner of their 45.73 acre parcel, and number 14-016-10-001-06.
So the only change I would make is that your motion, at this point, is to either approve or deny that land division application from William Irvin, with the rest of what you read. You can leave out the "by the zoning administrator, Peter Gallinay." That should not be part of your motion.
Can't get out of this.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Reserve support.
I just want to make, okay, we need to read out the whole action you're taking.
Dave, would you mind reading the, either motion to approve, the request?
Okay. Motion to approve the request from...
Wait, I'm sorry, I apologize for this, and this is entirely my fault, I should have put it in the agenda. So it's a motion to approve, and then start with PLD 23-023, land division application, and then I would simply add "from William Irvin," and then pick up with "to split approximately" and go to the end of the sentence.
Where's the, where's the "to split"?
If you delete, in this paragraph, if you simply delete out "by the zoning administrator, Peter Gallinay..."
Oh, got it.
And just replace that with "from William Irvin."
To approve the PZA 23-01 administrative appeal.
Nope, nope, nope. To the right of that first sentence, PLD 23-0023, land division application. Would you like me to read, I can read it out, just so that's on the record? Would that be helpful?
Yeah, you would.
Okay. So this is a motion to approve, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So this, it's motion to approve the PLD 23-0023, land division application from William Irvin to split approximately 10.10 acres from the northeast corner of their 45.73 acre parcel number 14-016-10-001-06.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a support?
I support.
Motion, motion by Coin, support by Luz. Is there any discussion? Would you roll call vote, Tara?
Yep. Bars?
Aye.
Coin?
Aye.
Luz?
Aye.
Buckley?
Nay.
Three ayes, one nay, motion passes.
Okay. Now we're on to item C. How do we handle that? Is that even material?
I think I would invite the attorney to speak.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. With the approval of the application, we would withdraw the application as unnecessary in the judicial decision. Secondly, I just like to thank you for your time, and I'm not exactly sure the gentleman was well, had control, and I apologize if that is unusual, and I definitely disqualify that result of the Chair having the lead. So, I just wanted to get that out, thank you for your time.
Okay. Does that require any type of motion from us? That's a withdrawal, it's just not an issue?
I would just simply acknowledge that the application is withdrawn.
Okay. Now we're on item nine, other business. Is there any other business that brought before the ZBA? All right, item 10, extended public comment, restricted to five minutes. Is there any additional public comment?
What time are you opening now?
Pardon?
What time did you open the public comment?
What time?
Yeah.
Oh, goodness.
8:43.
Oh, wow, sorry. Okay. Item 11, final board comment.
Hold on, you need to close the public comment.
Just close, just acknowledge that you closed your public comment.
Okay, yes, okay, thank you.
At 8:44. Just need to note that.
Okay. Yeah, public comments are closed as of 8:44. Item 11, final board comment. Are there any other comments from the board members? I probably, I should comment that this was difficult for us, because we're relatively new to this. The fact that, the fact that we have attorneys representing both of us, and it gets very complex and very detailed, and I know that it's difficult for, I know Liz in particular was, it's very difficult for her, and I hope she, and I'm sure she'll be back, and we'll keep on going, but I appreciate, I appreciate the people here sticking with it, and their patience, in particular, patience for working with us, and, well, that's all I have. So, just wanted to thank you all. Thank our legal counsel for being here. All right, no other comments, the meeting is adjourned. 8:45, motion.